All right, good.
Fake news.
Fake news. I'm just rushing around. I feel like I'm out of sync a little bit.
Yeah. So I guess you're trying to stay on point.
I, well, I got, I think Congressman, not Congressman, but State Rep Keith Bell.
Keith Bell, oh, no, that's my guy.
Andrea.
Andrea. Do you want Stephanie's bag? Are you taking it too?
Uh, Doris is gonna take it.
Doris is gonna do it.
That's exactly right.
Grady.
Yes, sir.
Can you do invocation?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna go ahead and get started and then we'll come back.
Yes.
At this time, the mayor will call to order the regular city council meeting for December the 13th of 2022, 6:00 PM Tuesday, City Council Chambers 201 East Nash Street, Terrell, Texas. We have with us in the chambers District 2 Grady Simpson, District 3 Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Mayor Pro Tim, District 5 Andrea Reese, and absent but excused is District 4 Stephanie Holmes Thomas, Deputy Mayor Pro Tim. This time, we'll do invocation. If you would remain standing as we do our pledges. Grady, would you lead us in invocation, please?
Yes, Mayor. Out of heads, please. So Father God, we've come giving you thanks for another day. We thank you for the storms. We thank you for the sunshine. We pray for your protection of our families. Keep our city leaders and our city workers who work so hard and sacrifice so much. Guide and keep them in your hands and the whole city of Terrell. And all in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Great. So as always, right on cue, we're ready to roll. We have mayor and council, community recognitions and events. Council members, do y'all have any recognition at this time?
I'd like to give a thank you to both the Terrell Chamber of Commerce, the city of Terrell, all our staff members who worked to prepare for the Christmas parade or end work the day of, and all the local partners and elected officials that continue to participate. And year over year, I think the best part of the parade is going down the road and seeing all the smiling faces and the kiddos waving and continuing to wave again and again. So I played a very small part, but thank you for all the partners that make that happen every year.
Okay, yes, I agree. Anyone else?
I'd like to remind everybody that the Holly Jolly event for downtown Terrell is still continuing this weekend. Santa will be at Whistaway Bakery from 11:30 to 2:00. And then also Santa will be at Film Alley that evening as well, so people can see him and get pictures.
What time is that at Film Alley? Do we know?
It starts at 4:00.
Is that Saturday? Saturday at 4:00?
Hey Andrea, are they giving away those City of Terrell cookies for free?
That would be nice.
I'd like to have those.
So anyone else? At this time, I would like to recognize our state rep Keith Bell and his wife Annette is with him, I see. The better half rode with you, kept you company on your way to Terrell. So Keith had asked if he could come before the council and do a little presentation, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And the floor is yours, state rep.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Appreciate it. It's always an honor to be here with you. And of the comments about the parade, I'd agree. I appreciated the invitation. Always have a great time. And it's one of the most well-attended that, you know, I get the pleasure of participating in. It's a lot of fun. So anyway, I did want to come before the council. One of the things we get to do is to recognize folks in our communities and then also do resolutions, memoriam for people that are, you know, a big part of our communities and make a huge difference, leaders. And I've got one I'd like to recognize today that I passed a resolution for, and that's Mama Carmona. And so I know Rick, a great lady, your mom. And just to read a little bit about this, whereas admired restaurateur Maria Pillar Carmona of Terrell passed away on January 18, 2022 at the age of 92, bringing a great loss to her family and many friends. And born in, uh, uh, uh...
At the what?
At December the 8th, 1929. And so, you know, before even World War I, so you, what an amazing life lived that's had seen so much. Two World Wars and all the others that came and all, a man on the moon. You know, that generation, one of the greatest generations to see what all had occurred. With that, you know, married January 9th, 1944, after World War II ended. The mother of 10 children, grew up to include a family that was treasured with 18 grandchildren, 30 great-grandchildren, and eight great-grandchildren. What a legacy. Don't we all sit here today? I'm 60 years old and today I just hope to have great-grandkids. You know, I got five grandkids. And so what a great life legacy lived. Married 51 years, someone that was loyal, something that we just seems to be fleeting today in our society. Whereas Maria Pillar Camona lived a rich and purposeful life, centered around her family, her faith. She was a philanthropist, worked at the church, worked at the hospitals here besides the restaurant. Went on to assist you in creating Carmona's Restaurant. She will be, she will forever hold a special place in the hearts of all who were privileged to know her. And now therefore be it resolved that a tribute paid into her memory, Ms. Maria Pillar Camona, and that our sincere sympathy be extended to her loved ones, to her children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren. And there are many other relatives and friends. Signed by Keith Bell, State Representative, House District 4. So it's my honor, Mayor, to present this to you and memoriam for your mother, for a wonderful woman. I had one of those too, and I know what this means. It's a hole that you'll never fill. But what a legacy of a life well-lived and I just, I know she loved you and you as her. And it's my honor to present this to you tonight.
Thank you very much. Mom would have celebrated her 93rd birthday on December the 8th of this year. So very special to me. I want to thank the state rep for being here with us today, and it means a lot to me. We're gonna come take some photos, but you're not going anywhere yet. Let me, I'm gonna ask that my family come up and take a photo with Keith. This is my brother Fernando, my brother-in-law Stephen, and my sister Eva. So it's always an honor. And you're right, Mom was a very special person, not only to us as family, but to this community. She always taught us how to treat folks and to especially love the city of Terrell. So...
Why don't you get here with your family? And I'm gonna get over here on the head.
No, we...
No, really.
No, you get right here. I want you right, Fernando will get on the side of you. You'll be all right.
You sure?
Yes, I know, yeah. One more. All right. Thank you.
Well, uh, thank you again. I appreciate you.
Thank you for all your...
Thank you for the tweet.
But you're not, you're not...
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Again, thank you for recognizing my mom. Don't you go anywhere.
All right. And I'm not fixing to get roasted then.
No, you're not gonna get roasted.
Thought maybe that was Penn and Teller on a politician. I get my shot after I get done.
Certainly you didn't think that the mayor would pass up an opportunity to recognize our state rep who's done so much for this community. And you know, you have a special place in my heart personally, but as this community, as we move forward and we grow together, it's important for us to recognize each other. So from the office of the mayor of the city of Terrell, I would like to present your proclamation. And this is whereas state rep Keith Bell of Fornie is a lifelong Texan, and whereas Representative Bell began his career in the electrical field in 1976, opening his own firm, Intex Electrical Contractors, Inc. in 1983. And whereas Representative Bell is a graduate of Dallas Baptist University with a bachelor's degree in business studies, and whereas Representative Bell is active in numerous trade organizations, including the Independent Electrical Contractors Association, where he has served as president of both the Dallas and Texas chapters. And whereas before becoming, taking the office of representative, Bell acted as IEC of Texas Government Affairs Chairman for almost two decades. And whereas Representative Bell was elected to represent District, House District 4 in November of 2018. And whereas Representative Bell has been a longtime supporter of Terrell ISD and a proponent of public education, having served as a trustee on the Fornie ISD School Board for 20 years, being elected as president 14 times. And whereas Representative Bell has voiced support of Terrell EDC projects that are beneficial to our community. And whereas Representative Bell and his wife Annette have been married for 39 years. And whereas the Bells have two grown daughters, five grandchildren, and are members of the First Baptist Church of Fornie. And whereas Representative Bell serves as the vice chairman of the Criminal Jurisprudence Committee and as a member of the Public Education Committee, providing common sense and conservative solutions to problem-facing our state and community. And whereas Representative Bell applies his values, successful business skills, and extensive public education knowledge to address skyrocketing property taxes, private property rights, and local control. Now therefore, I, Rick Carmona, by the authority vested in me as mayor, and on behalf of the Terrell City Council, do hereby proclaim December the 13th of 2022 as State Rep Keith Bell Day in the city of Terrell and urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the many accomplishments of Representative Bell's leadership at the local and state level and the positive impact he continues to have on legislation as he works to fight for the best interests of our community. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the corporate seal of the city of Terrell, Texas, to be affixed this, the 13th day of December of 2022. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. And I'm certainly appreciative and not deserving. I'm elected as a servant and I've done my best to do so. I will tell you, I appreciate your recognizing Annette. I tell folks I serve at the will of Annette Bell, the constituents, the constituents of...
I'm not giving you the cookies.
Right. That's it. The constituents of House District 4 and the Speaker of the House. And so in that order. So thank y'all for, and thank her for allowing me to serve, but thank y'all for this recognition. I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, my friend. Council members, if y'all want to come up, uh, Ronnie?
Please do.
And Andrea?
Thank you.
Grady? Let's take a photo with everyone. You got one more? So you know, just like you have, you have your staff, the mayor can't get things done without...
Thank you.
Without council?
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate it.
All right, here we go, one more.
All right.
Thank you. And thank you for all your...
You bet. I'm glad to be here.
I really do appreciate all you do.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Fine words. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you again, Mayor. Thank you so much.
You know, next year, State Rep Bell, we're going to be celebrating our sesquicentennial, and we hope to be in Austin in February, in February. So looking forward to seeing you then.
That's right. And I will make sure that we pass a resolution. We can only pass resolutions with a house number, a house resolution, HRs, when we're in session. And I will be passing a resolution recognizing the city of Terrell's sesquicentennial.
Wonderful.
So I'll get that done. So make sure, Mike, if you'll get my staff the details so we can get that done, we'll get that...
I'm gonna admit that George Anne is extremely effective, and thank you for her service.
You bet. If you'll get that to George Anne, we'll get that filed early and get that done. All right? Before February, because we should be able to get those done before we actually get busy.
Okay, we'll...
Thank y'all again.
Thank you.
This is quite an honor.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you. All right, is there any more recognitions before the council? Do we have any remarks from visitors? Hearing none. Our next item on the agenda, discuss and consider the minutes of the regular city council meeting on December the 5th of 2022. Those are the regular city council meetings of November the 29th of 2022, also of December the 5th of 2022. Is there a motion?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the regular city council meeting, November 29th, 2022, and minutes for December 5th, 2022.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Grady Simpson, District 2, a second from Andrea Reese, District 5, to approve the minutes as circulated. Is there any further comments? All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries with unanimous vote of those present. Our next item on the agenda is 7.1. Council members, I'd like to postpone this item until January the 10th. Could I get a motion to do so, please?
Motion to postpone item 6.1 until January...
10th.
January...
January 10th.
January 10th.
Okay, so we have... 7.1.
We'll try this again. Motion to postpone items 7.1, discuss and consider board appointment until January 10th of 2023.
We have a motion. Is there a second? So we have a motion from Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Mayor Pro Tim, District 3, a second from Grady Simpson, District 2, to postpone item 7.1 until January the 10th. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries with unanimous vote of those present. Our next item on the agenda, discuss and consider paddock board reappointments. Don?
Mayor and council, there is a roster for the Park and Downtown Improvement Corporation in your packet. Tori Lucas and Mary McCoy, their terms expire this month in December of 2022. They both wish to be reappointed, and that is, that is, I guess, the action that needs to happen.
Does anybody have any comments?
I also received confirmation from Mary McCoy and Tori Lucas to continue serving on the board. I served with them along the, along with them on the board, and they are excellent board members, ask plenty of questions and give feedback. So I'd love to, a motion to appoint, reappoint Mary McCoy and Tori Lucas to serve a second term on the paddock board.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Mayor Pro Tim, District 3, and a second from Andrea Reese, District 5, to reappoint Tori Lucas and Mary McCoy to our Park and Downtown Improvement Corporation. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries with unanimous vote of those present. Our next item on the agenda is discuss animal shelter advisory committee. This is Police Chief Ken McKean.
Mayor and council, ordinance 2520 establishes an animal advisory committee. In the past, we've had a committee. It stopped meeting during COVID, and we have been slow at putting that back together. So we're here tonight to just to discuss reestablishing that committee. The ordinance calls for four members, licensed veterinarian, a municipal official, individual who holds a position as an animal control shelter attendant, and an individual who is a representative of an animal welfare organization. We do have four applicants, two of which were on the previous committee, who wish to serve again. That would be Dr. Kynes and Dr. Belmares. And then from the city, Omar Amada. And then Sherry Harmon, who is actually an animal control person with the city of Fornie that would like to come and help with advising. So the board is advisory only. They look at policies and procedures, help, basically help give information as to how we can make the shelter better and comply with any state regulations from that standpoint. And then, of course, they're an arm of the council. So any minutes or meetings, we would bring back to y'all with any concerns that they may have.
Okay, and this is under Councilman Simpson's, if we're right?
I think we have a committee here that we have failed to assign. No, no, it is. It's Animal Advisory Board is Grady Simpson. Pardon me, yeah. We're thinking about another board over here.
So if, again, this is discussion, I guess you're gonna bring this back to us for some action? Do you anybody have any comments or questions directed toward the chief?
Chief, I do have a question and, well, statement and a question here. So it sounds like the advisory board is really, you know, policy-focused. Wondering, has there ever been an individual that has served, has served more as a community member, you know, representative voice? Or is there another organization that tends to help out in terms of, you know, whether it's like fundraising or connecting with others to, for support of the animal?
I think the animal person who represents the animal welfare would be more that person. But the ordinance is so specific about who has to be on there. So normally, the animal rights person or animal welfare organization person would be the one that would have the broader picture of, you know, what we're doing is ethical and those kinds of things.
Yeah, and I think we owe you going back and double-checking our state law on this because I believe it has this odd, very specific membership, partly because of the state law involved where it's overseeing some of the issues at the animal shelter. So Ken and I can go check that, and Mary Gale, and we can make sure that we give you a copy of the state law. It's referenced in here, but we owe you that because I think that helps explain why the committee is structured the way it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, chief. Don't go anywhere. Next is discuss update to Police Department monthly reports. I'm assuming this would be you again.
We have added a new report. Each month, you get a, you get a NiBRS report, which is a crime-based report that just shows crime numbers for Terrell. And we have designed a new report that captures more activity of what the police department does, and it's set up the same way, kind of like the NiBRS report was. So it's comparing year-to-date this year to year-to-date last year. So it gives you a month-to-month comparison, percentage increase or decrease. So we want to start bringing that to you each month, just to go over it. It gives police calls for service, average calls daily, alarm calls, security checks, average per day, citations, a large section on the police department itself. One to watch is response time to primary, first, primary one calls. That would be any violent crime in progress, major accident with injuries, something where you have to get there right away, lights and siren. So that's response time averages. And then non-primary would be delayed calls, like a delayed theft, delayed assault, delayed burglary, where it's not as important to get there immediately, but get there as quickly as you can. So those numbers kind of give us an idea of what our reaction time is. Case load is for CID, new cases that came in, cases cleared, and then the jail, I'll give you some jail... give you some jail numbers, how many we're confining each month, how many of those are felons and misdemeanors, and how many are juveniles. And then some animal control numbers, how many were impounding. We started collecting data on wild hogs since it's such a big problem, to give you an idea of how many we're dealing with, and then their calls for service. And each month, we'll bring those. We can, we can amend this, we can add to it, take away from it, however you want to set it up. If you want to see something, let us know and we'll, we'll stick it on there.
So is there a response time that we're targeting in the P1 or the NP category?
Well, right now, our, our times are good. I like to keep it under four minutes.
Okay.
So we're, we're pretty close to that right now.
Right.
Even for non-priority, we're, we're looking pretty good.
Four minutes is what?
Yeah. That's from the time you call, it's dispatched and the office, first door officer arrives.
Is that internal, is that a national number, is that just?
That's, that's our, yeah, internal, yeah. Now, if you compare it to other cities, you may be talking 30 minutes, 40 minutes, 50 minutes, so.
So I, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
And a great number to have when you can respond with, within four minutes. Under five minutes, I would think, is a good response time.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a good number.
Yes.
We want to keep it there.
And, and mayor and, and council, I would just point you out to the very, very top statistic there, police calls for service. That's a really, you know, kind of a bulk way of looking at this overall workload that they've got in the police department, and it's this issue that we've been preaching of. It's great for us to add more and more jobs, more and more businesses, more and more retail locations, more and more houses, and that's the number right there that we gotta pay attention to, right? Because as that number goes up, we're simply have to add more officers to cover that workload. So kudos to the team. They're doing a great job now in the police department handling that, but I want us to always keep an eye on that percentage change under police calls for service. That's a, that's a tough number for us to work through.
Those numbers are at 73 and 75 from last year to this year. December, I, I would think is typically your highest number or receipt calls for service. Would that, is that correct or not?
It, it would be correct. So if we're looking, I would predict that December's are gonna be somewhere in the 7,000 call range.
Right.
So add another 7,000 to 76,000 and that percentage will go up.
Y'all are doing a lot of calls, and we certainly appreciate your service to the community. Does anybody have any comments or questions for the chief? Like the report, we'll review it and go from there, and if we have any, if you have any questions, please reach out to Mike or the chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discuss advanced metering infrastructure, AMI update. This is our Director of Utilities, Mike McKeska.
Good evening. Yeah, I just want to give you a, a status report, so to speak. This is, most of the numbers are basically from last week. They change week to week a little bit. Oh, yeah. Is this a smart TV? Is this it? Why is this thing so slow? Okay, here we go. All right, I apologize. Okay, this, this graphic, some of y'all have seen this, and it's been a while, okay? Over on the left, what this, the, the water meters, and then the meters with the valves that, that allow remote cutoff and also have pressure and temperature sensors in them. And then there's also an item called a gateway that Census provides that actually can connect any type of data from an I/O point and, and then communicate to a base station. So the, the items on the left, the primary on the, the two top ones represent the meters, okay? And you can see the wireless RF and what that is going to. We have base stations mounted at the elevated storage tanks. And once the information gets to the base stations, periodically what it does is it pushes the data over into what's called an RNI, all right? This is all online computer database that is managed by Aquometrics, who is Census, the Census rep, Census is the meter. The RNI, once it, that's the data bank, basically. So it pushes data into what's called Census Analytics, the word analytics is not there, but Census Analytics, and that gives the city access to this data through a portal that's Census Analytics. It links to the billing system, and then it also links and pushes data to the customer portal. So at the end of this, I'll give you a quick demo or a look at what the customer portal looks like. If we have time, I can pull up Census Analytics and kinda show you what it looks like on the city side, or we can do that another time, okay? So that's kinda the overhaul of how the system functions. It's, it's reading data frequently. We get numerous reads, about 96 reads a day, I believe it is, and then it summarizes it within this data into hourly and daily and weekly reads. So installations of the meters began August 2022. It was behind because of the global supply chain issues, chips and resin and manufacturing of, of the meters themselves. Everybody was, that was contracting to get meters was running behind. And Aquometrics, again, is the company that we contracted with. They're about 53% complete. That's through 33 routes that we have, and they, that's how they're doing their installations. They, they target by a route number, which is the way the system is, is broken down. They've, they've, they've at least started in 21 of the 33 routes, okay? Out of that 53%, they're hitting both commercial and residential, and as best I can tell, it's, it's fairly close on the percent complete between residential and commercial. Each routes vary tremendously. Some are almost all residential, some are almost all commercial, and so they're hitting everything they can as they go, go through there. Part of the contract that, that council approved included a lot of replacements and upgrades to meter boxes that were damaged, replacing lids and so forth, installing meter setters that would meet our standard, and, and that's just basically like a yoke that connects the service lines and the meter sets there, and it's easy, allows easier access for maintenance in the future. And so there's a lot of that work being done, and I will tell you, the Aquometrics rep that's over the field installations today told me, and he's told me this before, y'all have done a great job in trying to, in, in working towards upgrading your system. This is not just replacing meters, you're also doing some maintenance work in the process. He said, we don't see this hardly anywhere that we do work. And so I wanted to say thanks to the council for supporting the, the extent of the work that's going on, okay? It's gonna make a big difference down the road. They generally have had two crews working with the rain, with some other scheduling issues, getting close to the holidays, running a little bit, running one crew here just recently for a little bit. I talked about the routes, the, and what they're doing on notifications, they're telling customers, hey, we're gonna be working in your area. They, they were, they were initially telling me they'd probably get it sent out, the mailer sent out this week. This afternoon, they said, well, it might be another week or two. They're targeting to get a few more percent complete, hit about 57 to 60%, and they'll do some more mailing, so. Okay, part of the work that, that goes on is what they call it, an RTU list that is created each week. If they have any issues or concerns, that they return to us. So there's a lot of coordination that goes on with the city, and this is being, our main point of contact is our water quality supervisor, it's Dustin Starr. Dustin and his, one of his employees, Kyle McCarrier, and there's others that have been doing work as well, but those two have been the main point of contact, working with Aquometrics. And I can tell you, they, they have been very busy, really doing a good job, and I want to commend them for that. There's a number of things that come up, and you can see the list there, the type of work that goes on. And one of the things that comes up is, is an example that we, we've gotta, we've gotta push and get some effort done here over the next month, is so far, they've identified approximately 80 meters that are, the service lines are a little too shallow for the meters to actually fit in the box correctly with the endpoints. And, and the Aquometrics was not contracted to go in in their lower service lines, it was too much of a variable. They said, we, we don't know how to cost that out, and it's not something that they do. So this is some example of some work that comes back to certain curb stops that they're replacing some, we have to replace some. So there's a lot of coordination going on, and we're in the process of still working with them. There it goes. So ongoing and upcoming work, we, we have a weekly conference call at, on Tuesday afternoon just to touch base between field personnel and city, and the guys doing the programming and, and computer stuff in the background, and just to make sure there's not any concerns raised or anything, and just touch base, make sure we're on the same page. And we're gonna continue to do that right now. They expect to be completed, I said, April, they're, they're hoping to be done by the end of March. It, it's, the rain's not helping any here the last couple of weeks, and so they're slightly behind from where they were hoping to be. One of the things we're gonna keep doing is continue to work and finalize what's called a pressure profile module. This is more so for operations, but the ally, there, there's different types of meters, and the ones that I mentioned that have the remote control valve have a sensor for pressure and for temperature. And so all of the ally meters, and there will be, once we're done, close to 250, 250 spread around the city, will actually have pressure data that's going on. And, and this pressure profile is going to take all of that data and put it in a database and then link it into our GIS system, so we'll be able to have a map that we can look at, and you can click on it and see what's going on. You can also set alerts. If there's a, potentially a main, if there's a main break, a pressure drop, alerts can go out to, to the field guys, to billing, so people, the, the idea is to get information in the, the right hands in case we start getting calls or we need to respond to something we could investigate. So, and it'll also help with some modeling. We're gonna be doing some modeling on an upcoming project, and that's an example of what, what will come up. So on the customer portal, they just allow customer access to data, they can set alerts, and I can show you that real quick, and then it has links to bill pay on the website and so forth, so.
Mike, before we go.
Yes.
Into the portal demo, does council have any questions or comment? One of the things that I was, on the 80 lines that we need to lower, that, that's the responsibility of the city.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Are those residential or are those?
Those are residential.
Those are all residential?
Those are residential, and, you know, it's not that we couldn't put the meter in there, but we would have to raise the box and keep the box out, or keep it out of ground or raise it above ground. We don't want to do that.
Okay.
So what we're wanting, and, and what the plan is, is to split that up, and we're gonna, city staff has addressed some of those, that 80, some of those are done. There's, there's probably 10 of them done.
Okay.
And so I'm gonna split it up between city staff and get some help from some contractors because we, we can't wait too long to get these addressed, because every week they find, potentially find some more. One of the things that we're hoping for is the numbers will start trending down each week because they're hitting some of the, the, the more difficult routes, some, some known problem areas. It was the target to try to hit some of those early on so that if we did have work, we would have time, and we're hoping over the next three months, the numbers trend down a little bit. We'll, we'll see.
And then on the sensors that you have throughout the city, that was, as I remember you doing the presentation, so that we would be able to identify leaks quicker if we had a issue?
If, if there is a main break in the area.
It would show.
Where, where, and these are going on residential, okay? So they're gonna come off as primarily six and eight inch mains, but there, if there's breaks on a six or eight inch main, and you see a pressure drop and it's low enough to set an alarm, an alert, you know, based on what pressure we set as an alarm, okay? If it's typically 60 PSI and we say, hey, if it drops to 40, give us a, a notice, well then we have an opportunity to go, something's going on, and then we could go take a look at it. And it may be before a customer sees it. That's kind of the idea.
And then, I guess my other comment would be, look, if we're gonna do it, might as well do it and do it the right way, and I think that's the approach that y'all have taken, and that they recognize that, and you don't have to go back and revisit. So our best case scenario was that everything worked fine and we didn't have any issues. Are you finding that there's more than or about what you expected to find in the field?
I, I would say it's, it's about what we expect.
Okay, good.
Yes. Yeah, I don't think we're getting, we don't have any shocks right now, but, you know, from, from what's coming back, there's, there's just 6,000 meters out there and they're older setups, you know, you're gonna have problems.
Yeah.
So no, we're, we'll get on top of it here and, and get caught up.
All right, okay.
That's the plan.
All right, so now, now you're gonna do the demo?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
I'd have three questions, Mike. As far as the remaining installations, because there, you said about 80 lines that you're working through, are those located throughout the city or are they concentrated in specific areas is my first question?
Okay, we've, so we've, we've, we've completed the, we've done work on 21 routes. We've, we've started or 90 something percent complete on 20 something routes. Those are spread out around town. I do re, so I, I think the general answers are spread around town. I know that over on Brook Hollow, where we had some complaints about inaccurate reads and so forth, had to work through that. There is actually about 15 addresses on Brook Hollow itself that the, the service lines were just installed too shallow, and we're trying to get the meters lowered to the ground level so that, and, and to make the, the setup correct, keep everything proper. So I, I know there's 15 of the roughly 70 that we still have to do are on one street. That was just, that was the way it was installed during, when it was put in. It, it, they were installed too low.
It was curious about that because I, ours hasn't been installed yet, however, I hear from, from others throughout town that, you know, that their installation has occurred. So that's why I was asking whether dispersed throughout the city or concentrated in areas. So thank you for the response, and would it be worthwhile to send out notifications to customers or are we, or would, or would your recommendation be that we're overstepping in our role as far as like the, the portal, you know, notification via email, via phone, whichever way the customers prefer to receive notifications? As an example, for provenative maintenance, let's say that the pressure, the temperature drops below zero and, and you want to avoid some of your crew having to go out and turn off the water because individuals have broken water lines, you know, hey, customers, water's going, the temperature's going to drop, please cover your faucets on the outside, leave your water dripping. Would it be worthwhile to, to add alerts like those as we see those opportunities?
Yes, yes, and there is actually a, do you remember what it, what, did it say messaging? Memo, messaging, something. There is a location within, within the structure, and I apologize, I don't remember exactly how it's structured, that you can, you can do that. You can shoot out notifications to anybody who has signed up on the portal. And that they can actually get notified of things. And, you know, we're, you know, we're hoping we can get at least 20 or 25% of the people interested. I mean, it'd be nice to have a lot more, you know? But what, what the consultant's telling us is you typically, they typically don't see like 50%, okay? us is you typically, they typically don't see like fifty percent, okay? It, it's usually fifteen or twenty percent, that that's pretty successful. So, even, we have the capability, when, when customers get signed up, you're not going to hit everyone, okay? But, that, that is something, I know Allison's been aware of, and kind of looking into, how do, how can we get some messaging out, and, and so we'll continue to look at that.
Good, well, since you're, since you're a step ahead of me, so glad to hear. The last question I have is, as you lead into the portal demonstration, is, once the customer has an installation happen at their home, are they eligible at that time to sign up for the portal, or are we waiting until they're-
Not yet.
-everything's complete?
Not yet. We've been advised to, to wait until we're basically done, complete with the installations, because what we've been told is if you send it out too early, then either people forget, or everybody's frustrated, because they can't do what they're interested in, and because their meter hasn't been changed out, and it may not be changed out for three months or six months, and said, so if you, if you put that information out too early, sometimes it creates problems. So, so we've been working through this, and there's still an opportunity to tweak a couple of things, you know, here, if, if need be, I think, and, but, what I am anticipating, if they're going to be through by late March, probably, and we'll probably have a, a bill stuffer, and some notifications going out late February with, with the bills or whatever, saying, hey, this is coming up in the next month, and, and, because by then, we're going to be, by the end of February, we'll be seventy-five, eighty percent complete, I think. So, I think, from what we've been advised, I think that's a better time to do that, either, either at, at the end of February, or the end of March, and we'll work through that, okay?
Thank you, Mike.
So.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yep, no, that's fine. Absolutely. Hey, okay, so, what you see here on the screen, the customer portal, this is basically when, whenever we get to the point to roll this out, customers can go to a, they'll get a link and go to this, and then initially, at the bottom, it says, need to set up an account, and so, that's what they have to do, to get going. When you hit that, it'll, it'll ask you for an email address, and that becomes part of your login, and that's part of the notification on alerts and things like that, they can send that out. So, you have to have certain information, account number, name on the account, and then there's something called a secure token, that is set up by the billing people, okay, UDS, and, and they're already assigned, but they're, what they will, they will be added to the bill. So, when a customer gets their bill, they can, they know their name, the name of the account, they can see the account number, and then they can see the secure token, and, and once they have those three pieces of information, they can come set up an account, okay? So, what I've done is set up one just at the city, as a, it's a city account, is a, is a demo, because I was given the secure token to do this, and, if I remember my password.
It's always that.
Okay, good. Okay, so when a customer logs in, this is what they'll see, and, so right up top, you've got, you've got a deal, a link called support, if you click on this, what it does is it will take you to a, a page on our website, that you can fill in a question and stuff, if they need, have any questions or need help about stuff. You have a bill pay link that you actually leave, and it goes straight into our current website, and then it's, so it's not a, quite a direct link, but that's, that's the way their system was structured. Here, you can toggle between English and Spanish, and this won't help me a whole lot, so I'm going to go back to English, and, and then the customer can see the account number, and then the meter number as a reference, if there's any questions. You come in here, and this, this is just a dashboard they created, that they can first see this. You, you can look over here under alerts to the right, and it says, daily usage warning. So, what I, what I went in there, this, this meter, I wanted to just make sure it was functioning, so it's very low usage, but I went in there and set up an alert, and I'll show you that in a second. And so, pretty much every day, I get an email that says, hey, you've got low usage, hey, you've got, you know, or you could set high usage, or, well, I'm, I'm sorry, maybe high usage, and then you can do it over days, if you want to look at, well, how much am I using over a week, for instance, and, and set up alerts for that. So, under the usage details, on the left, this is where you come in here, and you start looking at the data, and you can see this is for the last seven days, this is each day, this is the gallons, and, and then it shows rainfall and temperature that's linked to, to an area rain gauge, and, and temperature data, okay? And, and everybody can kind of see this, if you want to track usage, for instance, in the summer, you want to see, you've got temperature swings going on, and the customer has high usage or low usage, they can kind of track it to temperature and rainfall in the air if they want, and you kind of see some things. If you want to zoom in on this and click on a particular, eh, twenty-four hours, sorry, there it is. So, you can see, you know, usage was identified to one hour, and like I said, this is a very low usage, I, I did not set up under something else, it won't go, okay, if you go back thirty days, twelve months, this is just the default usage that, that is set up in the system currently. When you go to your meters, you can set up, if you have more than one meter, you can put a nickname over here, and change it, and toggle between the two, and not have to remember the meter number, things like that. And then under setting, under usage alerts, this is where you can go in here and actually say, okay, tell me when the usage exceeds a certain number each day, or over seven days, and then, yeah, enable the alerts, and this is where, you know, give me a, and who does it go to? Well, it initially goes to the email, if I want to add somebody else, then you go to add alert recipient, so somebody can notify that, and there's also configuration, I thought, yeah, for text, so you can add, if, a customer can add their cell number and do a text option if they want to do stuff like that. And if they moved over here from Europe, and they like liters instead of gallons, and, and Celsius instead of Fahrenheit, they can do that, okay? So, so, anyway, go back to the dashboard, but that's, that's basically it on this. So, comments or questions?
And this won't occur until after all the meters are put in place?
Yeah, we're, we're going to roll out and make this available, you know, we, we still may have a couple of tweaks and stuff in it, and, but we're going to roll this out by the end of February, or late March, at the, at the latest, the end of March, and notify customers that here's a website you can go to, and you can log in and set up and explain what it, what it, the purpose is, okay? So, that's customer side.
So, that's what you were saying, like, probably about, only about twenty-five percent of them will use?
What we've been told, what we've been told, is when cities roll this out, they, when they get, if they get about twenty percent, it's, it's actually a success, because, I mean, that's, but if you think about it, twenty percent of six thousand customers, you're going to have twelve hundred people out there, twelve hundred customers out there that could, that might be, you know, have access to this. And it gives them an opportunity to manage this, because, you know, for, for leaks, there's a continuous leak situation and stuff that can come into play, indicating a leak, and so, you know, like I said, that's the customer portal side.
Yeah, and I can assure you, we're going to promote people signing up for it, it's in our best interest, the more people who sign up for it, so we'll ping people in their, in their water bills, we'll give them every opportunity we can when they sign up to just get involved in it, and, you know what, if, if they never look at it, that's okay, because we know when there's a problem, they'll gravitate straight to this data, because it'll be exactly what we show them if there actually is a problem out in the, out in the real world.
Do we know if the, will the bill pay system portion of that, is it going to charge like an extra fee for utilizing that online system?
It, well, yes, it, it, it's gonna, because it's not a separate bill pay system, it's a link to the one that we have already, the current structure is, is a charge, and we've had discussions about do we want to absorb that? Most places don't, because there's just a separate cost associated with it, that's something that we can look at and discuss, but my understanding is, all of our, all of our online bill pay opportunities, there's, there's a charge. If you drive up to the window and use a credit card, there's an extra charge, as opposed to cash.
And that, that's not new due to this system, that's just existing policy, yeah.
Yeah, that's something that's been going on.
I just wondered if that was going to change with the new system?
That, that was, it's not, if it changed, it wouldn't be because of this.
Right, right.
Okay, that's the, that's the thing. On the city side, just within census analytics, now this is an example of what, you know, I've got, I have access, the, the ladies up front would have access to talk to a customer and, and take a look by device, okay? So, let me give you an example, Dustin Starr has an ally meter, and so, this is, and go quick dates, so, if I'm sitting here talking to Dustin's wife, and she's asking me questions about what's going on, well, here's, here's the, the type of thing we can see, where am I looking here? Graph, thank you. Okay, so, you know, you could sit there, and she could be looking at the customer portal, and, and a customer service rep can be talking and, and looking at the same screens, the same data basically, and talking through this, saying, well, this is what I had in November, and I click on it, and I go to a week, and I click on it, and I go, here's each day, and, well, here's a high usage day, what happened? Well, here's the hourly reads, and so you can talk through that with a customer, and if they have access to the portal, fine, and if they don't, you can still talk through them with, with a lot of, in detail, whereas we've never been able to do that in the moment, we would have to say, we can try to have somebody download a report, and then we can get the report to your, talk, talk through that, if we can download it from the laptop. We're getting away from that completely, so, and then, see, Dustin has an ally meter, so here's his pressure, so you can, you can sit up here and see what's going on with his, with the system pressure out at his house, you can see the temperature, now this is actually water temperature, so this is a sensor in the meter, so, so it's, it's not going to be the same as outside, but, but this is key as well, water temperature starts dropping, it gets below fifty, and you start monitoring that, be careful, and start expecting main breaks, you know, when it hits mid, especially mid-forties, cold water and cast iron pipe don't go well together, so you can start looking at things like this around town, should be about the same, but, but this pressure data right here, what we're going to, this will be one point that links back to our GIS map, and you can see locations around town, okay? So, this is just an example of what can be seen, so, so anyway, those are the two key modules, or whatever, apps, that you can, we're looking at, and like I said, one is more city use, and one is customer use, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm impressed with the data, and I think it'll save time, being able to see things in real time, for not only the city, but the customer itself, so, good job. Anybody have any comments, questions?
I, I just think this is great for, you know, like, people who have issues with, hey, my water bill's up, why? I mean, being able to go down to the day and the hour is amazing.
I should have pulled up one of those on-
Uh-huh.
-your district.
We finally have a way to have smart water.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is discuss youth sports update. Is this Caldwell, or is this going to be, who we got? Come on up here.
I'm a track star here.
Thank you, council. One thing I could say-
I'm pulling it up.
Okay, okay. One thing I could say before we get started is that I'm excited about youth sports, because these kids are our future, and we were all there one day, you know? So, first thing I want to bring up, oop, sorry, first thing I want to bring up is our twenty-twenty-two youth sports programs, as far as our numbers, first thing I want to go over is our partnership with the ISD. The numbers started off a little low with one fifty, and then we've seen a dramatic increase to eight hundred in the fall. So, the next item that I want to show you guys is the swimming pool, our summer program, our Learn to Swim, see them four hundred and twenty-one people in the Learn to Swim, and thirty-five in the water aerobics program. Tiger Swim had sixty kids from Gilbert Willy's second grade to participate in that with our partnership with the ISD, and our hopes is to expand that for this upcoming year. Gilbert Willy. So, that's the school that we started with, and we plan to expand to the other second graders. For football, our numbers are pretty consistent with the one twenty-five, and for track, we've seen an increase in numbers in both programs, Terrell Prime and the Texas Longhorns, Terrell Prime being seventy-eight, and Texas Longhorns being ninety-one. Our youth baseball program, the East DFW Baseball, their numbers are pretty consistent, I think we actually seen an increase in the spring and fall for seven hundred and sixty kids total, and five hundred fourteen for this fall season, and you can see how many Terrell kids participate in that season. All right, next slide. For our youth soccer program, as I said before, we partnered with the ISD this past year, as of February twenty-eighth, we had entered into a facility use agreement, and this facility use agreement, us, the city of Terrell, would provide insurance for the spring and fall season, and we would pay for field maintenance, or provide field maintenance, and we would be funding for the TISD staff, which is a total of sixty-five thousand. Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. And for this twenty-twenty-three spring season, the registrations will start in the next two days, December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. For our youth baseball league this upcoming year, I wanted to go over some information. So, East DFW Baseball used to be Fornie Youth Baseball Association, but they changed their name, because their demographic is of Terrell, Kaufman County, Fornie, Hunt County, Rockwall, Van Zandt, et cetera. These are a group of nonprofit individuals that are providing a service for our kids, as well as other kids around in the surrounding area. And us, the city Terrell, we benefit from this by collecting five dollars in player user fees from every registrant, so, all the seven hundred and sixty kids we seen in the spring, and the five hundred and fourteen in the fall, we collect dollars for every kid.
That goes to the city, goes to the Terrell youth?
General fund.
General fund, okay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, can I, can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
What about the coaches, do we, do we do anything with the coaches, or they provide the coaching and all of that for the kids?
It's, it's all turnkey with them, they, they handle everything.
Got, okay.
Yes, sir. For our registration for last year, they started December seventeenth, and registration closed February fourth, so it's about two months of registration, it started off with seventy-five kids, and five, about five to seven kids drop off, because they age out of the program for the upcoming year. And we hope to see this next- And we hope to see this next spring's registration to open somewhere around January, early January. And we continue, we hope to continue our partnership with East DFW, and hope they abide by the guidelines within our facility use agreement.
One of the items I want to interject with this particular item is always keep in mind, yes, we're with DFW today, but we're always open for the opportunity for a local nonprofit to dive in and take another swing. So, right now, today, this is the most successful component we've identified.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. For our youth football, they entered into a Texas Power Ranking State Championship Tournament. This past weekend, we had four of the age groups to participate in this. Two, two of the age groups made it to the semifinals, and then one made it all the way to the finals, end up getting second. So, proud for the Tigers to make it all the way there and participate in this state championship. All right, U Track, we have the Longhorns, Mr. Keith Willis's team, they went all the way to Corpus Christi with about fifty-six kids to qualify all the way in that state championship. And we provided sponsorship this past year for them, and recognize their athletes for their accomplishments, as well as for Terrell Prime Track Club with Coach Jamal McCullar, with his twenty-one youth kids participating in the AAU Junior Olympics in Greensboro, North Carolina. We also did the same for them as we did for the North Texas. For our FY twenty-three goals, I'd like to iterate, these are goals for our team for this upcoming year, is just to promote our partnership with the ISD for the soccer program, and for also our Tiger Swim to get that moving as well. And in February, we plan to conduct the youth sports survey so we can expand on our goals and try to get more things coming for us in the city of Terrell. As well as pursue opportunities for grants to upgrade our facilities, football, soccer, baseball, et cetera. Mrs. Caldwell, do you have any other items that you would? Thank you, sir. And in May, we plan, hopefully, to challenge the state hospital in another game. And hopefully, we can have our council members to participate and win this year.
I'm in, I'm in, we're ready.
Yes, sir. And for June twenty twenty-three, our, we plan to complete our pool slide construction. And that'll be for our next presentation. Any questions?
So, on the soccer programs, we install lighting, how's that going? And are they, is it being utilized yet? Are they gonna, do they plan on having night leagues or anything out there? Do we know? Or is it just for practice, or?
Right now, there's no plans for nighttime soccer unless some organization comes in and wants to host an event dur, outside of our regular soccer season. So, we will entertain that thought. The current fields are available for rental, and it's on our current website. So, if you log on the city of Terrell website and go over to Terrell.
Terrell Parks and Rec.
Terrell Parks and Recreation, you'll then be able to reserve one of the soccer fields.
What's the fee for reservation on the, what's, what's the fee for the reservation of the field? Do we know?
It's twenty dollars for our larger field, and fifteen for the smaller field. That has three fields on it, so they're consecutive.
Okay. And that includes the lighting? Who controls the lighting for those?
We do.
So, they would call and register for a field, and then y'all would know, and y'all would turn the lights on and off for them?
That's correct, and it more or less follows the same parameters as our other fields.
Softball, softball, whatever. Okay, good, all right. Anybody have any questions, comments about?
Mr. Horn, you know, the Little League football team?
Yes, sir.
Had a challenge with lights while they're practicing night. Was that ever resolved? Do you guys know?
Yes, sir. So, we have lighting out there in their practice field area. So, they were able to utilize that this year, and, you know, the president, Mr. Pickens, appreciates what the city has done.
And, and we'll say this, it's all evolution, right? We gotta evolve. Okay, so, the, the youth football program expanded, which is good.
Yes.
But the problem is, we don't have quite enough facilities to accommodate with lighting. Because when the season comes to an end, that's when the playoffs are here, and that's when they need the lights most. So, what we've done is this year is a lot of kids can take advantage of the current football practice facility that we have the lights, but we also let them use the baseball complex or softball complex, outfield only.
Thanks for that.
To help add additional lighting.
Okay, cool.
So, Mr. Horn?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a, a question here regarding youth soccer. So, are, in 2022, we did approve, as you mentioned, a resolution to partner with the city of Terrell for the soccer facility use agreement. And we did that because the Terrell Soccer Association had disbanded, and we wanted those soccer athletes to continue to, to utilize, to be involved in, in soccer. And so, I'll break my questions down here just a bit. Do we happen to know, or can we obtain information on how many of those soccer athletes were able to return since we formed the partnership with TISD? And I'd, I'd also interested in knowing, out of the eight hundred athletes in fall 2022, how many of those were from the city of Terrell specifically? And I noticed in one of the other youth programs, I think it was maybe the, the baseball, we are charging a, a fee for every registrant. So, I'm wondering what that means? Are we doing something similar for, for soccer, and whether it's for students that are from the city of Terrell athletes or not from the city of Terrell? So, I'm trying to better understand the funding that we've allocated towards the partnership agreement, and how our city of Terrell athletes are able to benefit. Trying to do a cost analysis here in my, my head at this time.
Okay, for that first question where you're saying the, the amount of Terrell kids as far as the total program?
Out of the eight hundred.
I don't have that information right now, but I can get that information, and we can send that to you. And, Mr. Caldwell, we'll cover the other question.
I'll, I'll make this, I'll make this as brief as possible. And I, I, I would lend to say, Councilwoman, contrary to belief, the city of Terrell has always had participants outside of the city limits of Terrell, Texas. And that hasn't changed, right? So, we do not know to date the exact number, okay, that registered with the Excel Center. But I'll guarantee you, we can have that information to you as probably as early as Friday. Because Excel tracks that data. They've got that information at hand. And I think you had a third question.
Really, where I'm going with this is, is there, is there an opportunity to better serve our city of Terrell athletes in the soccer program? And as we think about all the, all the youth programs, since they're, are residents, you know, they're, they're our taxpayers, how we can better serve them in, in soccer and the other youth programs? You know, we are charging a five dollar fee for registrants for, for another program. How do we think about assessing it a cost such as a registration fee for those that are out of city of Terrell limits? Is where I'm going with my, my questioning tonight.
Sure, and we've entertained that. We brought it before the park board. We have not crossed that finish line to bring it to council. So, that's an ongoing conversation that we brought to our park board. So, once we get that approved, our recommendation to the park board and get it approved from the park board, we'll bring that forward to council.
I know that, you know, I'm supportive of continuing to look for ways to support our city of Terrell athletes and making sure that we can retain and recruit other athletes so they can have, you know, an extra, an extracurricular activity to be involved in here.
Yes, yes, Councilwoman. We work really hard, and thanks to you all and administration. We've got opportunities, grant opportunities for families that are disadvantaged. There's oftentimes during the suppression of the economy, we have waived the five dollar fee periodically, periodically from time to time. So, we always working hard to find out how we can help our city of Terrell city limits, students that are within the city limits. And, and we offer grants if they call us and there's a need. But at the end of the day, you've got to have willing and acceptable participation. And I think that's a struggle for every city is what we found out.
Yeah, I, I guess the only thing that I would offer in that thought also is the ongoing conversation of, are we in, are, are the kids in, who are city of Terrell kids in a league with only city of Terrell kids? Or are they in a league with folks from, kiddos from surrounding communities? And I, and I realize one philosophy is, you know, have it be Terrell kids focused on Terrell kids, only Terrell kids. They're clearly the folks we want to take the most care of, right? Those are, those are our citizens, those are the kids of our citizens. I think one of the observations we find operationally is that it helps you complete the league, it helps you find the coaches, it helps you have an adequate number of games where you're not just playing the same team over and over again. So, you get some, you know, quality improvements there with a certain, the economy's a scale of the size of the program that you're running. So, not to say that you want to serve people outside the city limits, but you do want to have a large enough program so it's an effective program, right? So, there's just, there's, there's a reason why the park board will spend an hour talking about it because it's, it's easy to start tossing out both sides of some of those issues.
And I want to be clear that I'm not saying we need to pull back on allowing other students or other non-city of Terrell athletes to, to participate. You know, if we have fifteen hundred students participating, athletes participating, and, and we have an increase in, in Terrell students and retaining those Terrell students, great. And there's a, you know, economic, as I've learned, you know, economic development, a factor that also goes in, into place. So, there's different factors. I just want to continue to voice my support for supporting our city of Terrell athletes, and appreciate you offering those grant opportunities as well.
Yes.
I do want to say this, you know, our investment into our youth is incredibly important because they are our future. I know Rick and I played ball here, Little League, all the way up to high school. And I know that investment that was made into me as a kid prepared me for the high school level. The coach's job was easier because of what was done on that youth level. And so, I don't want us to get unfocused on that and start trying to maybe do things, too many things outside of that, and saying what we got to do with our high school youth. What the youth was put into the youth department right now is getting those kids ready. With those kids that run summer track, when you get those kids in high school, man, they're ready. Their mindset, their conditioning, the whole nine yards. So, when we put money into our youth, that is preparing them for the future and making our coaches' jobs easier on a higher level. So, I just want to make, make mention of that.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, thank you, guys. Next item on the agenda is business items. On nine point one, discuss and consider resolution number two zero four nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Terrell, Texas, authorizing the city manager or his designated need to negotiate and execute a contract for construction of a new swimming pool slide at the Terrell Municipal Swimming Pool in Ben Gill Park through any duly authorized governmental cooperative and declaring an effective date. This is our Director of Public Services, Glenn Caldwell.
So, I'm gonna interrupt Glenn, and I'm gonna thank Sherry Davis, Demeter Turner, and Serena Turner for being here because I think you guys are the pool slide advocacy group. Two city employees and one daughter of a city employee, thank you for being here. And I think they're lobbying you guys for support of, supported this item. So, anyway, they do a great job for us out there, and I, I just wanted to say thank you for being out here tonight.
They're here to make sure I get this right. I'll try. The pressure's on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. It's always a blessing to come before you. Thank you, Mr. Horn, for your efforts tonight. Great job. This'll be fun, it'll be short, and we'll be excited to hear the end results of all of this. Long time overdue, the pool slide update. May of 2022, our pool slide was rescan for the final time. We pray, right? And June of twenty twenty-two, we had a structural evaluation done conducted by DEET's Engineering, which was not good news, obviously. The slide is in need of complete replacement, and that's one of our goals for FY twenty-three. If everything meets the road, right, if it rubs meets the road, we're, our goal is to try to replace the slide. Due to the inflation, the cost estimates for a new slide, they're going to continue to rise. Please consider that in your consideration tonight. We hope that city council will make sure that the resolution is reviewed and a decision is made. That's our goal ultimately, and I'm gonna go through this next slide, and then we'll spend a little time on the resolution. The estimated costs for a new slide, they are not cheap. And obviously, keep in mind, we have a existing slide that has to be demoed. It's not going to go away. The way that the design of the current slide is, is set up, the water comes out of the, the, the pump and over the top into the pool. This new design will allow the water to be pumped and extracted from the side. So, they have to core underneath, okay? And then core into the side of the pool to, to circulate the water, which is a much better design and much safer. So, we're talking about a company that is on the buy board, which is Vortec Water Slides Solution. The estimated cost for the new slide, we're looking at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a demo, demo and some utility work that'll need to take place, which is what I just mentioned. We're looking at an estimated cost of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, I also know that we don't know where we're gonna end up in all of this. So, we wanted to make sure we had enough funds available to complete the task. So, we tacked a hundred thousand dollars on for additional work that'll be required. Our total estimated cost is seven hundred thousand dollars is where we think we'll end up. We always remember, our goal is to do it efficiently and save at any cost when we can, and repurpose those dollars down the road for something else. There's another slide here that kind of give you an outline of what the pool slide will look like. As you can see, it's somewhat parallels our existing pool slide. We've got the height, we've got a cleaner look. The material that this is manufactured of is a totally different product. The, the current slide has open pores with exposed fiberglass, which you have to spend a lot of time waxing, gelling, resurfacing, and you're spending gobs of money. Y'all have approved it several years in a row. And as you can recall, the DEET's results of the engineering structural review wanted, there are some structural issues that cannot continue as well. We love the design of this, and I hope you do too. Okay, so, the resolution is probably in your packet there, I do believe. Okay?
On the old pool, what was the life of that? When, when did we install the old pool, the slide? Do we know?
I don't, but Mr. Rogers does.
All right, so, look, you know what? This is a big expense, I understand, looking at seven hundred thousand. But if you look at what the life of this new slide will be estimate, do we have a estimate? Yeah, I agree. And ninety, when?
Ninety-four.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh... No, I don't want to be the first one. I, I think it's a good investment for our kids. You, if you, if you ever drive by the pool during the summer months and you see those kids out there playing and enjoying themselves, that's money well spent. And the councilwoman's right, she wants to spend money for our residents here in town. A lot of those kids are from Terrell, right? And they don't have an option, they don't have a pool at home, they don't, you know. So, man, I'm supportive of it. Does anybody have any comments or questions regarding the pool slide?
That's wonderful, we have a city manager here. Address that question.
It's a good segue.
So, it's really a, a fairly simple story. We knew that this is a capital purchase and the fire department engine were both on our docket this year. And as we've investigated both of those, we originally thought, well, we'll buy that fire engine this year and then we'll borrow money for this particular project. And what we found out is that we really just need to put the down payment on the fire engine this year. So, we're going to save about seven hundred thousand dollars on the fire engine this year that we'll have to spend next year. So, rather than encumber this in a debt obligation, which was the original plan, we're just going to go ahead and buy this out of the general fund, capital fund, I mean, and then be able to move forward with the project. So, we will, we'll just essentially cash flow it. It is money that we were able to put into the budget this year because of the American Recovery Plan funds. So, this gives us a nice clean cut thing from a federal audit standpoint to be able to point out and say, that's what we use those ARP dollars on. So, it's a really good fit in the budget.
It's a great deal, well, it's another investment to our youth.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Well, Mike, what, what, trying to understand dollars here. So, what was the, what was going to be the, the cost?
You had a one point, you had a one point one million dollar item in your budget to do the fire engine rolling stock. And we think that that number's actually going to be around four hundred thousand dollars. As you have heard from our fire chief, whenever we place this order, which we're busy doing right now, they are telling us that that's probably an eighteen month lead time to deliver a fire engine. And so, we're going to unveil a new strategy on that soon. We think that new strategy will be about four hundred thousand dollars. And then there'll be a couple of other payments that we make primarily during FY twenty-four. And we'll, we'll get you a battle plan for that. My comment to you is if I knew I'm going to have to borrow seven hundred thousand dollars or so, much better to do it a year from now. I think we'll get a better interest rate a year from now. And I think that delaying, delaying that and going ahead and spending this, like I said, it helps me comply with some federal rules, so.
So, we set aside a one point one million dollars in capital funds for the fire engine and four hundred thousand is going towards the down payment? Or we estimate that's the cost of the actual fire engine?
That's just down payment stuff.
That's the down payment. And then the, the rest, we're estimating to pay in payments in twenty twenty-four?
Yes, and we'll decide as we move from our FY twenty-three year to our FY twenty-four year whether or not we need to do that as a short term debt for that fire engine or if we need to do that as, or we're able to do that as cash flow. And I, I don't want to make a claim on that right now. That's, that's, that's the budget presentation for summer of twenty-three. And I will just also give you the hint that we're trying to create a strategy to buy two fire engines instead of buy just one fire engine. So, there's a lot of work going on right now in the fire department to try to arm wrestle that financial strategy together. But anyway, that's a different presentation for a different night. For tonight, I'm very confident we only need four hundred thousand dollars on fire engine. We had a one point one million dollar line item for that that gives us a clean seven hundred thousand dollars to redirect to pool. And if you make this action, then we're able to make those switches and proceed with this purchase.
And let me, maybe it, it may be faster if, if Glenn, if you can answer this. Instead of trying to go back to the, the slides here, are we saying the current slide is no longer usable? Or is expected lifetime expiration date nearing and, and what that timeframe would look like?
We, we're past that date, to be candid.
It, it was closed. I, 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 when I, when Glenn gave me the engineer's report on the pool slide in the middle of the pool season, it was a very easy decision to make, even Sherri Davis agreed, close the slide immediately and never use it again. There's been a fire there, the motor has problems, the anchoring is too rusted out. That slide's done, we, we, we will not ever use that again, yeah.
And, you know, I certainly want to be supportive of, of the youth, just as I indicated earlier. And while we are looking to postpone funding for, partial funding for our fire engine, and Chief's not here to, to advocate for himself tonight, at the same time, you know, I'm advocating for other costs. I have two major streets or two streets leading, leading to major neighborhoods that also need attention and, and I believe they might cost, one of them might cost about seven hundred thousand dollars, a little bit, a little, little more. So, I'm, I'm, I have concerns about how to spend the funding. And I'll spend some time with Mike and the mayor discussing, you know, funding opportunities for those projects as well. That's where, you know, trying to understand where we're at in, in the amount of funds that we have to spend on other projects as well.
Yeah, I certainly respect the councilwoman's concerns about streets in their district. I, I agree with you on that. However, on the agenda, discussion is limited to the pool and the action we're going to take for, for the pool. So, we will certainly look at that and, and see what we can do. This, the, the question before us now is about the swimming and swimming pool replacement. Here's what I think should be said about that, that this, this slide's never going to get cheaper than it is right now. And if we don't pull, if we're not willing to pull the trigger on it now, we may miss an opportunity or we may see that the slide estimate goes from four hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred and fifty thousand overnight. The quicker we can get it and seal the deal, I think the better. Demolition work, is that done by Vortex or is it going to be done by the city?
That'll be done by a contractor.
A contractor, so we'll hire a contractor.
Assist with that demolition. And as well, that's the pump installation. Like I said, the pump is, is part of that cost, which is fairly substantial.
So, I, I just want to clarify, the FY twenty-four, I'm sorry, the FY twenty-three budget, and you go back, you look at the presentations we made to you. We made a commitment to you in the FY twenty-three budget creation process that we would borrow this money and that we would spend it on a pool slide. And so, really, the recommendation isn't about, you know, using on this or versus using on that. We had made a commitment that we would borrow money to replace the pool slide. And I'm just saying, I think we have an opportunity to cash flow it and I think that's a better financial strategy for us. In terms of other things we need to spend money on, I can assure you, we're very mindful of that. And I can promise you a presentation by Glenn Caldwell very, very soon on a road strategy that I, I hope will answer a lot of your roads questions. So, we, we very, are very, very much dedicated to the road side of it. But let's wait for Glenn's roads presentation and then we'll tackle that if you don't mind.
Good.
Well, my support for the pool is going to maintain because I, I was not against it. The pool slide was not against it during budget. And I hear what you're saying, Mike, and you'll, 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 you'll notice throughout the, our conversations. So, I'll stay adamant about the topics that I also raised that aren't set on the agenda for tonight.
Cool, no, we're good. And does anybody else have any questions or comment? Okay, good. Thank you, Glenn. So, this is a discuss and consider resolution number two zero four nine. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution number two zero four nine.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Grady Simpson District Two, a second from Andrea Reese District Five to pass resolution number two zero four nine. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries with unanimous vote of those present. Our next item on the agenda is consent agenda item number ten point one. That's resolution number two nine four six on second reading. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Grady Simpson District Two, a second from Andrea Reese District Five to pass on second reading ordinance number two nine four six. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries with unanimous vote of those present. Our next item on the agenda is to adjourn an executive session in accordance with section five five one of the Texas Government Code to discuss the following. Section five five one point zero seven two deliberations regarding real property. We are now in executive session. Oh, and five five one point zero eight seven deliberations regarding economic development negotiations. We are in executive session. We are now in executive session. Oh, and five five one point zero eight seven deliberations regarding economic development negotiations. We are in executive session.
Hi, good to see you.